Ready to get started, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you will please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Our dear gracious heavenly father, we come to you tonight and just the joy of this season that we are entering to with Christmas. And we would just call out to remembrance and celebrate Christmas, the birth of Christ, the Savior, and we celebrate that tonight. Also though, even those who are celebrating Hanukkah, we recognize that every good gift comes from above, from the Father of lights. And so we celebrate those things tonight. We asked that you would go before, says we do the business of council, of the business of this city, may you lead and guide us, and it's in your holy name we pray.
Amen.
Please join in the praise.
For allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation governed by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, three, two, roll please.
Mayor, let's see.
Kerry Hyatt, Ward 1, here. Dave Stapp, Ward 2.
Here.
Kerry Roff, Ward 3.
Here.
Kevin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Pat Green, Ward 6.
Here.
Family is all here for council, hip, hip, hooray. We have got a, uh, thank you Julia, the, uh, we've got a couple of sets of, uh, meeting minutes to approve this evening, council, you've had both of them before you, one for our December 3rd regularly scheduled meeting, and then the called meeting that we had December 15th to handle some business of the school system. You've had both of those minutes presented to you earlier this week and had an opportunity to review those, and now would be the time to make any edits, or if there are none, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve the minutes of December 3rd and December 15th.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And those minutes are approved, thank you. We have a slew of things that we get to hear about and not vote on to start things off. Mr. Menino, if you'll get us started with T-20-03.
Thank you mayor and council, all these first readings dealing with the zonings are all, all related. The first one's a proposed text amendment to the heavy industrial section of our zoning ordinance that's looking to add an additional use, the uses indoor athletic, athletic training facilities and indoor recreation facilities, that use is proposed with a special use permit. Additionally, that use is currently, or those uses are currently allowed by right in the light industrial district. With it being a heavy industrial district, heavy industrial does have some more intense and intrusive uses. With that, the proposed text amendment is adding the special use element to that, and Planning Commission did review this, and they did recommend approval of this proposed text amendment.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Randy at this time? If there are none, I'll open up a public hearing relative to T-20-03, and anybody should step forward and comment, may do so at this time. And if you would sir, your name and your address for our clerk.
My name is Scott Arnold, I live at 310 Clubhouse Court in Kennesaw. I'm one of the owners of Flicky Stick Pole vault, which is formerly known as Georgia Pole Vault. And, uh, the reason for the text amendment is, we think it's a great adaptive reuse for some of your, uh, heavy industrial areas, specifically the one, the location that we're in is over at 55 Xena Drive, and I guess that's up on the next item of the special use. But, uh, we just think it's a great use of that, that ability to, uh, take a less used, more or less, like the facility we're in, abandoned warehouse, and be able to, just because of the zoning, be able to reuse it, uh, for a less heavy industrial use, because that, that building right now is, I don't know if you've seen it, it's probably never going to be used for heavy industrial ever again, uh, but it's, it's a great use for what we need it for. And like I said, we'd just like to, in favor of that, and I said I brought a few people here with me to, not going to ask them to speak, but if you want to raise your hand, let them know that, that you're here with me. This is the group that, that we have over there that, that we're, currently we're in the building, but, uh, like I said, we didn't realize at the time that it wasn't zoned for what we were using it for, so we're kind of just trying to go through the process to make it all above board and legal.
Great, thank you, appreciate you being here. Anyone else wishing to step forward and speak on the issue, may do so at this time? And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for T-20-03. And again, this is a first reading, we do this in two readings, we'll take this up for consideration at our next council meeting, which will be January the 7th, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you. And, uh, so Randy, if you'll please continue with S-U-20-03.
Thank you again mayor and council, this particular application would move forward if y'all chose to approve the text amendment that we just discussed. This application, as you noted, is at 55 Xena Drive for a special use permit for Georgia Pole Vault, or Flicky Stick Pole Vault, to convert this, well, it already has been converted for indoor athletic training facility. As the, uh, previous applicant had noted, these type of spaces are ideal for conversion because they have the large indoor unimpeded areas that you can't get in some other facilities, so the adaptive reuse, as he had mentioned, does lend itself to, um, older industrial buildings with that. Planning Commission did hear this special use permit application, um, after they had approved, or recommended for approval of the text amendment, and did recommend approval of this special use permit application.
I apologize for not asking this in closed session, because it literally just came into my mind as you were talking. What would have stopped the applicant from just getting this re-zoned to light industrial, and then us not having to do all these different things?
Well, the applicants are only leasing certain spaces, they don't own the entire site. Um, the property owner, I don't believe, wanted to re-zone it to light industrial, in case somewhere down the future, there was another use, but again...
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, any other questions for Randy at this time? Thank you, Randy, and I'll open up a public hearing for S-U-20-03, and again, ask anybody who wishes to step forward to speak for or against to do so at this time.
Good evening, my name's Kurt Hess at 2260 Richmore Drive, Mary Island, Georgia. I'm the other partner with Scott Arnold for Flicky Stick Pole Vault, and, uh, again, we're asking for the approval of this amendment. We, we feel that we provide a unique situation here in the Southeastern United States. We're one of, we're actually the only facility that houses a indoor training facility like we have for specifically pole vaulting in track and field. We have kids that come train with us from Alabama, North Georgia, South Georgia, Atlanta, and so forth, and providing this facility for them to excel at what they enjoy doing is, it's a, it's just a huge opportunity for them that they don't have anywhere else, we feel, here in the Southeast. So, with that said, that's why I asked for your permission to have this done. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else may step forward and speak, come on up.
Thank you, my name's Brad Walker, 3851 West Wick Way, Kennesaw. Um, yeah, so Scott and Georgia Pole Vault, they just kind of asked if I'd come and chat with you guys, to kind of fill you in on some of the things that we have actually going on in the facility. I'm a retired pole vaulter who was coaching at Washington State, up in the Pac-12, just recently moved over here to go to Life University for chiropractic school, and brought with me a lot of elite pole vaulters. So, right now I have, uh, two athletes, um, who vault for the US, who are top 10 in the country. One of them had the highest jump in the world last year, she's actually ranked top 5 in the world. She's, she's, uh, training really well, and very hopeful for Olympic, not only like making the games, but, but gold medal, I mean, she's that, that high caliber of an athlete. Actually just started coaching the Filipino national record holder, so she's in the building as well with us. Two years ago, we had a new high school national record holder, uh, who now jumps for Puma, and she's also in the group. And then, uh, there's a girl down in Car, uh, Carrollton, um, who just got a full scholarship to Georgia, who looks like she has the potential to jump a new high school national record, and potentially beat the other girls' national record that I'm coaching. And I just kind of wanted to share with you guys that, um, not only for, at the youth level, to have an indoor pole vault facility is amazing, you know, to get a lot of these kids who may not have the access at their high schools, um, but, uh, we are, you know, trying to take some of the best girls in the country and trying to get them to the games. Um, and as stated earlier, there's, there's no real options, so when I first got here, everything was great during, you know, good weather, as soon as it starts getting cold, we're starting to dial, kind of reach out to that pole vault community, and these guys were super gracious, just opened their doors for us. So, basically just wanted to say that, you know, we're, we're here to support them, and to hope, hopefully, we can, you know, stay in the building and try to get these girls to the games.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sir. Anyone else may step forward and speak at this time? And if there are none, I'll close the public hearing on S-U-20-03, and again, we'll take this up for consideration on January 7th. So Randy Field, take us to S-U-20-04.
Thank you again mayor and council, uh, this again is also a special use permit for the same location, 55 Xena Drive, and in a different tenant space. The applicant, applicant is DC Academy, their baseball training, um, outfit, and they're utilizing a different space, but again, it's the same reasoning with the indoor facilities, the indoor room that's ample in the industrial spaces. If the proposed text amendment, uh, does go through, Planning Commission did recommend approval of this special use permit application for their facility as well.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Menino on that item? Thank you sir. And I'll open up a public hearing for S-U-20-04, and again, ask anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against to do so at this time? And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for S-U-20-04, and again, we'll take it up on January the 7th. All of you are welcome to stay and watch the rest of your local government at work, if you've got something else to do, we won't take it personally. Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Randy, if you'll get us started on the first reading of ordinance, uh, for downtown definition, uh, definition of downtown entertainment zone.
Yes, thank you again, um, mayor, uh, this particular, uh, section 4.1 of the alcohol ordinance was recommended by the Alcohol Control Board for approval, it provides for a definition and map of a downtown entertainment zone, the map is displayed up here. They had some discussions, uh, you know, about possible alterations, but they left it as is, as they recommended it for approval.
Counsel, we talked during the work session about making an adjustment to that map, and uh, if...
Do I need to go stand?
I would absolutely, Gary, I would love for you to stand up and make your proposed adjustment to that, so that the public can see this, and uh...
I could suggest that this line, basically, it ends right here, the legal, uh, address or address right here, the map, so it stops here, so it's like, you know, back up here, maybe.
So you'd like to eliminate the portion of Gilmer Street between church and Cherokee?
Yes. Church and Cherokee, yes.
Counsel, have consensus on that, or any discussion? That does, just for the record, that does address an issue that was brought to the Alcohol Control Board, relative to, uh, the Tabernacle Baptist Church parking lot, they've been fantastic partners in, uh, providing their parking spaces to the public for the downtown area, and, uh, this would move that, uh, entertainment zone further away, as opposed to adjacent to their property, so, um, if council is amenable to that, I'll ask, uh...
If I don't hear any objections, I'll draft an amendment to that. And mayor, for the next, uh, three items, instead of Randy coming up, I really dealt more with those, so I will bring those up.
Randy, you've been replaced.
If Randy doesn't mind, I didn't think so.
Good, alright, so do you have anything to add about the definition of the downtown zone?
I think Gary raised his hand, I didn't know if he wanted to add something else.
No, not just the next item.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, we'll move on to the, again, all these items are first readings, and, uh, the next, again, including this item, and the next three, these will all be taken for consideration at our meeting on January the 7th. So, Mr. Lovell, if you will please, uh, take us to the next set, the rules and regulations of downtown entertainment zone.
Yeah, the next one basically amends section 401.5 and 401.6 of the ordinance, and basically defines an entertainment zone and the requirements thereof. This was vetted by the Alcohol Control Board, and they have their recommendations to you. Council during their work sessions raised several issues, um, that I wanted to basically let you go ahead and know about. One, the proposed ordinance has a 12 ounce container limit, um, council discussed maybe having a 16 ounce with a 12 ounce pour requirement. Also, there's a reference to a, um, not being allowed in a public park, and council discussed to do away with that, so they would be able to walk around Friendship Park, um, in the downtown area as indicated by the map. Those were the two, just, two items that council, um, discussed. I did want to make you aware that, basically, um, the hours of this will be allowed is 5:00 PM and 10:00 PM on Thursday and Friday, between the hours of 11:00 AM and 10:00 PM on Saturday. No establishment is required to allow off-premise consumption, it will be a decision to be made by each individual establishment in the zone. If they do decide to do that, they will, uh, purchase at cost from the Downtown Development Authority, cups that are duly marked, so people will know that, uh, they have a right to be outside the establishment. With that, there will be signage placed at the appropriate points, as determined by the Public Works Director and, uh, Mr. Menino. In addition, we have, um, currently said that, uh, it will not be allowed on the first Thursday in December, on the date of the high school homecoming parade, on the July 4th parade, if it falls on a Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, or any other date as council may determine by resolution. There's a littering fine of a hundred dollars for, um, the cups, if you do throw them down on the ground while you're out drinking. In addition, you are not allowed to take the cups in your car, if they are seen in your car, it is also an additional hundred dollar fine. Um, because these are to be disposable cups, not to be reusable for each meeting and everything. The other thing to make you aware of is that, um, each establishment will be required that wants to do this, they will put up a sign in, in their door, explaining the rules, and showing the map for their customers when they leave. Each establishment will make its own rules determining whether somebody in that establishment is allowed to, say for example, take their beer and pour it in the cup, or if the establishment will actually require them to buy a new beer and have that filled up in a cup. That will be up to the establishments, we don't regulate that one way or the other. The last thing is, this ordinance as proposed is to be effective for a, only a one-year period. That will be from January 7th, if approved, that's from January 7th, 2021, till January 7th, 2022. Sometime during that time period, if council wishes to extend this ordinance, you will have to reconsider it and re-adopt it, or modify it as you may desire, um, during your normal two reading process. If you choose not to do that, come January 7th, 2022, the downtown entertainment zone will go away. That's a brief summary of it, and the proposed changes to the draft that y'all are looking at, that, um, we are recommending.
Couple of things, based on the, the larger cup size, I do think, you know, you've kind of mentioned it in the work session, there probably does need to be something on the cup that marks that 12 ounce...
Yes.
...line, so that if anybody overpours that, there's a, there's a fee for that. Uh, the only other part is, you, you mentioned the, at cost, uh, and while I wouldn't expect that the DDA would make it a windfall, um, I do think there's administrative costs in providing that cup, and I also think part of the, um, I mean, there's going to be signage that's going to be needed, there's going to be additional trash receptacles, there's going to be additional things, and, and again...
Those are all the responsibility of the city under the ordinance.
Okay, well, I'll also say then, the, the DDA, we're doing this to benefit those businesses, the DDA exists to benefit those businesses, and I've got no problem with them at least covering their administrative costs, uh, to, to handle those cups. Again, I wouldn't expect that they would mark these cups up 50, you know, 50% and make a, make a killing off of them, but it does need to, I think if there's a little bit of extra, they can get poured back into downtown, it only serves to benefit the retail shops that aren't necessarily, you know, that aren't serving, and, and, and the restaurants that are. So, um, when you say at cost, I don't know that what, what...
At cost, as envisioned by the Alcohol Control Board, was that if each cup cost a dime, then they have to sell each cup, each cup for a dime. Y'all have the right to, uh, change, change that or modify it as you want, um, you could put, um, at cost plus...
Plus a reasonable administration fee, or...
Plus an administration fee, I would probably recommend you define the administration fee as a percent or something, if you would like, uh, because otherwise, we'll have people arguing over what's reasonable and not reasonable.
Okay, well maybe we could sort that over the next couple of...
So can you clarify one thing for me? So you said the signage, the maps, everything is, we are responsible for it as a city, but the DDA is responsible for the cup?
Yes. Except, we're not responsible for all the signage, the establishments are also responsible for signage.
So if they choose to participate, they've got to pay for their own signage?
For their own sign in their own place. The city will provide the format for those signs, and it will be their responsibility to put them up and make copies, and however they wish to do it. The signage we are talking about is, you know, and of course, this is something staff and public works and, you know, city manager will need to get together and make a decision on, but what I envision is, there'll be some sort of central sign downtown, showing the whole area, that little map there, and then there will be signs saying that you're not allowed to drink beyond this, not allowed to carry your cups beyond this point, or whatever wordage they ultimately decide, at the key points on here. Unfortunately, unlike a lot of communities, we don't have a nice rectangle or square for, for our design, so we will probably have a lot more signage than most other communities will do. We also will have a issue with, um, on Main Street, as that is a state route, DOT will approve what, if any, signs we are allowed to put on there. So our signs may actually have to be off the right-of-way somewhat in those areas, you know...
Can we put markings on the sidewalks? Without DOT, without having to go through the DOT program?
We'd have to look at the individual sidewalks and see if they're DOTs or ours.
Okay.
You know, and I don't know, and I think, you know, we probably can put it, but I just want y'all to be aware, there's that, and one other issue I did not mention, there is one other event when this will not be allowed along the Main Street corridor, and also along the Irwin, I mean, the Tennessee Street corridor that's shown there. That is, whenever the DOT is actually doing a construction project, they do not allow members of the public to walk in that area with alcohol. So, the city will have the burden that whenever DOT is doing those types of projects, we will need to go place appropriate signage, so people will know they can't do it. And whether the city decides it's to put up signage for that individual, or if y'all just decide it's best to cancel the whole thing for the, that day, that'll be a decision y'all will have to make as the process goes along.
Okay.
Of course, we don't have a lot of construction activities on those areas, they've done most of the work there, and I'm not talking city's construction, just DOT's construction.
The only other provision, uh, I know the Alcohol Control Board changed the hours on Saturday from, I think we originated from 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and they changed it from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
They did, they did make that change, their reasoning was, um, that people waiting to have lunch and all would probably like to have a drink and walk around in downtown, and there wasn't any point in letting, starting it after the lunch hour, so they should, felt it should start before the lunch hour. And hearing no other objections or other comments, I'll incorporate the revisions that I've discussed with y'all, and have those presented to you for the second reading.
Matt, one thing that's, I just don't want to feel like we're overburdened, is, is the mapping and the signage inside of people's facilities. I mean, I, I don't own or operate a restaurant, but if I had to figure out a way to put a big sign up, I mean, we need more clarity on that.
It's an eight and a half by 11 sign.
It's an eight and a half by 11.
If you go to Kennesaw, if you go to Kennesaw, you can see a good example of, I mean, it's just, it's just right, it's, it's, it's literally on both sides of the door, it's, it's on the door, and you can probably view it from the inside and view it from the outside, so that everybody knows if you're walking out, or if you're walking, you know, if you, what the rules are. It's not, it's, it's just a laminated piece of paper, I mean, it's not going to be anything that we're asking...
It's not anything that's going to make your...
No, that, that doesn't mean that, like, table 20 may decide, they don't want to just have the city's piece of paper up there, they may want to go get a fancier plaque or something and put up there for their entrance or something, and, you know, the city would approve that and let them do that. But yes, this eight and a half by 11, you know, that will have to be placed on the entrances or exits within the downtown entertainment zone. You know, like, if you have an exit in, behind your establishment, like, I'll say Coastal, for instance, on Main Street, they have an exit behind their establishment, um, but you're not allowed to take any alcohol out back there. So, you know, they would have one on the front showing what can be done, and then they would have one on the back, basically saying, you know, this isn't part of the downtown entertainment, entertainment zone in the back.
Yeah, we're talking about two different types of signs, one, the actual facility that serves, if they have to place in their establishment, then the city would be placing other signs in the area of entertainment.
Yeah, I get that, like, no, no more alcohol passes this area, or hey, this is, you're entering the area, got that. I was just wanting to make sure that we're not too burdensome on people that actually want to do it, you know, we pass something that basically make it, you know, part of the...
Well, we're there provided, I mean, if you want some piecebaker rules, and once you piecebaker a map...
Uh, the only other thing I've got, and y'all probably think I'm, uh, indifferent is, is in support of I have been of this, is, is a hundred dollar fine enough of a, of a deterrent, is that, did we just get that from other communities? I mean, to me, you know, I think the, the more concern that we've heard from people is people getting out of line, working, walking out of, of the areas, doing things the wrong way.
Well, what...
You know, 250 or 500 dollars?
What, what the fine says is, um, and I should have been more clear on this, it says at least a hundred dollars.
Okay.
The judge has the ability to find anywhere from a zero to a thousand dollars per event, the city does keep track of every time you get a violation, so if you've come before us for the first time doing it, the judge would probably impose a hundred dollar fine. If you come before him for the second time, 250 or 500. You come, come before him a third time, you're probably talking about a thousand dollars.
Well, and the fine was for littering the cup, I mean, the biggest thing we were concerned about, and to me, that's a pretty large deterrent, um, now leaving the zone, and I guess, again, that's up to the city judge to...
Yes.
...to determine whatever violation.
So that hundred dollars is the minimum?
Yes, that is the minimum. Anything else?
Mr. Lovell, if you'll proceed with...
The, the next one deals with, um, 4-121, package outlet hours of operation. Basically, the state law recently changed, it said if you allow pouring establishments to serve before 12:30 on Sunday, you can also allow package outlets to serve before 12:30 on 12:30 AM on Sunday. Councilman Fox recommended we ask the Alcohol Control Board their opinion on this, they agreed that, um, they thought it should be the same for both package and pouring, so that amendment was made as part of what's before you. In addition, while the Alcohol Control Board was discussing it, the issue was raised regarding, why packaged wine outlets had a deadline of, or stop serving time of 9:00 PM? The answer to that was, because that's what they originally requested when they wanted the right to do that in the city. The Alcohol Control Board did consider it and said, they should have the same time as everybody else, and so they agreed to change their closing time to 11:45 PM for serving.
Did any members of the Alcohol Control Board recuse themselves for that vote?
I do not remember if any did or not, sir.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Drake has copies of their minutes, and we can, uh, forward that information to you tomorrow.
Sure, thank you.
Uh, if there's nothing on that item, the last item is a amendment to section 4-14, which basically deals with the home delivery of alcohol. The State of Georgia has adopted new legislation which allows for packaged outlets to... The State of Georgia has adopted new legislation which allows for packaged outlets to deliver alcohol within the city, within the city limits that they are licensed in, to someone's home. The state has a whole slew of regulations that you have to go through as an establishment, and they also regulate the drivers as well that do the delivery. The city decided that we would just adopt the state rules by reference, and this allows that to be done. In addition to package outlets, the Department of Revenue has said that they interpret the state law as, to also include restaurants. So restaurants can also deliver, deliver packaged goods. The difference is, package outlets can deliver packaged beer, wine, and distilled spirits. A restaurant can only deliver packaged beer and wine. They cannot deliver packaged distilled spirits. And by package, I don't mean filling up this cup and putting a top on it. That's not packaged. Package is the original sealed container that the alcoholic beverage was provided in.
Is this, is this result from, is this from COVID? Is this an expansion of that?
Actually, no. Believe it or not, this legislation was approved by the state before COVID. I will tell you, during the pandemic, the state went ahead and prematurely waived their requirements, as the city did, to allow establishments to do this. And we did hear at the Alcohol Control Board meeting from one of the owners of those establishments, who said that it was a lifesaver and actually probably allowed him to stay afloat during the principal shutdown period of the pandemic.
But, but these regulations, though, are more stringent than what they did during that time, correct?
Yes, they are. The, the state regulations are more stringent than what was allowed during the COVID week.
I, I think one of the pitfalls in this is the border of our city and going into the county, and when we have a lot of donut holes, I mean, you can look at folks who, the whole subdivisions in there, except for a few folks, or they're right up against the city. I think that there, that will be a pitfall if that comes to, to bear for these. I think that would be a pitfall for the, for the organizations who choose to do this.
Yeah, they will have to make sure they are delivering within the city, because delivering outside the city subjects them to a five hundred dollar fine and revocation of their license by the state.
And you said that this is in the county? Or you do not know? Because is this taking place in the county now?
Oh, I do not know whether the county has done it or not. I, I can say that if the county has not taken affirmative action with respect to it one way or the other, by state law, it is already permitted.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? All right, again, all these items will be up for consideration at our meeting on January the seventh. I'll call on Tom Gillum, HVAC unit at Aubrey Street Gym.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is part of the GeoBond projects that were approved a couple of months ago from council. This here is an HVAC unit for the Aubrey Street Gym. We received several quotes. Pennley Heating and Air Conditioning was selected with a low bid, which the total amount of the bid was forty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. It does include a five-year warranty for the compressor and one year for parks and labor, and this is a budgeted expense that will be paid with GeoBond Parks and Recreation Bond proceeds.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? If not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, Tom.
The next one is with the HVAC unit. It also has to have some electrical work done with the gymnasium, since the new HVAC unit will be a three-phase unit, so we need to have the electrical support for that. We, we received several quotes back on that. The lowest was JDH Electric LLC. Once again, this is a budgeted expense to be paid with GeoBond Parks and Recreation Bond proceeds. The total amount of this bid is eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Porter, you're up next.
Yes, Mayor, this is an insurance settlement with our Travelers Insurance Company. The amount to, for the city is twenty-five thousand dollars. It's coming out of our property casual insurance fund, and I recommend this for approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hampton?
Yeah.
Come on in. Take your time. I'm just kidding. Thank you for making room for all the folks that were here to see earlier, so.
I made a little too much room.
You're a gentleman and a scholar. I appreciate that.
Oh, God.
I know it broke your heart to not sit in here and listen to all that.
Sorry about that, y'all. So, yes, electric departments here requesting authorization to purchase a twenty-five-hundred KVA pay-out transformer for one of our customers that's got an expansion in the works. We actually have one now that's on the yard. We're going to use that one for their expansion, and we need a replacement. We did reach out and get six bids, and what we're requesting is the second to lowest bid because of the shipping time being a lot shorter and because of total ownership cost being a lot cheaper. Overall, it's going to end up costing us cheaper in the long run to purchase that one. The amount from Erby was thirty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars, and we request your approval, and it is a budgeted purchase.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Derek on this item? If there's not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. You start getting buzzer. Thank you, Derek.
Appreciate it.
Chief Carter, you are up, sir.
Thanks, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I bring before you tonight a repair, a request, and so repair and upgrade the HVAC system, the air system, for the server, server room at the Public Safety Headquarters building. The current system is failing. The room is getting too hot. We're concerned of our equipment getting damaged and losing our servers, and we're also going to be asking to upgrade this with this particular project. We need to go out and seek bids for this with folks that were familiar with the heating and air system at the Public Safety Building, which would be Galgon Heating and Air, Pennley Heating and Air, and also Calverly here of Cartersville. Calverly is the low bid, eight thousand, eight hundred dollars for this project. There will be some additional electrical work that will need to be done, up to a thousand dollars, so we're asking for it up to and not to exceed ten thousand. And this will be paid for, will be split, split between the Fire Department and the Police Department, and also the Fiber Department. These funds will be pulled from our budgeted maintenance funds for heating and air from all three agencies.
Okay. Thank you. Sir, any questions for the chief on this?
Just one quick one. So, big facility, obviously, we built that facility years ago. Who did all the heat and air at that time? Was it multiple people, or?
No. The original contractor for that was out of the metro Atlanta area, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the name, but the server room.
But were they serviced?
The server room, no.
Who serviced it?
Galgon. We have a maintenance contract with this company, Galgon, that they do it, but, but the, this particular room is unique, because it is the server room, it has a completely separate air system, because if there's ever a failure of the building, or it has to be redundant, because we cannot lose those servers. And what's happening is the backup system is starting to fail, and that's what's been keeping the building cooler. In addition, at wintertime, when we kick in, not to get long-winded here, but it's not really a thermostat kind of building, that, it's a boulder system, and when that air fails in that building, it knocks all the heat out in the rest of the Public Safety Building, and we have to go in and manually override it. That was a design flaw back when this was built in two thousand and eleven. We were unaware of it. The city never had a system such as this, and we feel that this is going to even correct that original construction problem that we had that we were unaware of.
This is weird. For it to be that specialized of a room, be that big a difference in cost, I'm just wondering, you know.
Oh, I, I can't answer that. We, we've inspected.
But these guys specialize in doing this above and beyond the other people.
Yes, and warranties, warranties, equipment have all checked out. We, I would not recommend it if I was not comfortable with it.
Yeah, and this item, as, as the chief had mentioned, only comes in the wintertime, when it gets to a certain temperature outside, really cold, the heat's on the rest of the building, that server room's got to maintain it, be a cold temperature, otherwise we're going to overheat those units, and then it'll mess up the New World software, the police and fire.
I get the importance. That was the reason. I was just wondering, hey, we're, we're getting one bed that's half of what the other one was, and I just didn't want.
Well, you know, sometimes we get that with those construction bids. Some of the, usually there's, might be an outlier or something, and sometimes it's just the contractors, maybe somebody might be a lot more busy than the other, and they do something high, or somebody might.
I believe in this particular case, that's the situation. But that particular company, the warranties are identical to all the equipment, all the equipment's the same from vendor to vendor, and also, this particular company has done a lot of work for the city before, too, so it's quality work, either one of them.
Any other questions? If not, motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item, Mayor, is the advanced metering infrastructure purchase. At this point in time, we've come to a point to bring a contract, post-contract to the Mayor and Council for this system. We've been working on it for two years, so it's a combination of several departments of finance, customer service, electric, gas, water, fiber com, make up about twenty employees. We've been going through this process. The council approved the hiring of UMS, our consultant, two years ago, and they worked with us to get to this point of selecting a system that's going to work for all three utilities. As the mayor alluded to in a previous council meeting, our city of cards were unique because we have three utilities. It's very difficult to find some solution that's going to work for every utility department, but we feel we found one with Sensus. Equipment Controls is the vendor that will sell this Sensus product. The overall cost for the entire system is thirteen million, thirty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. We do feel that this is the best solution for us going forward. As Bob Jones alluded to in the work session, he's been holding back on replacing some meters over the past couple of years, as we've been going through this process. It's, it's been, it's been a long time to get here, two years, but if the council approves this, it's going to take us another two years to really implement it, and probably a little bit of time after that for the, the software that we really want to get worked, worked through. But this has been something that a lot of hours been went into, and if the council does approve tonight, I would make the recommendation that you do, subject to final adjustment of the contract with the city attorney and city manager, because we're tweaking out a little things there. But the cost will not change unless we add more meters to that pot if we add new subdivisions. That's the only reason the cost will go up, but that would be my recommendation. We are looking at solutions to finance this. We have, we can either finance it through a fifteen-year bond, which could be covered primarily through the electric, gas, and water utilities, and as I alluded to in the work session, that the, the water and gas meters are a warranty for fifteen years, and the battery life that works with AMI, or with that metering system has a warranty, too. The electric meters are similar to what we're currently buying through the electric department, are three-year warranties. But again, this is a recommendation to us to move forward for this visioning session goal that we had a couple of years ago, and, and take us to that next level, which will help, help us make more efficient and also more effective with our customers, because once we get this all in place, we'll have a work order management software system, we'll have more functionality on your smartphones, the customers can get more data on their accounts once we get everything up and running.
And Craig, if I'm wrong, another benefit, I think, that was brought up by Bob Jones was that, I guess, if there's, if there's, if a customer has a leak, the identification that there's a problem is going to be able to be found a lot quicker, and that way the customers, you know, sometimes they'll be able to leak underground, and they don't know about it, and they'll run up thousands of dollars of, of leaked water, and this will kind of help in that as well, so.
Yes, Mayor. Currently, if you get your meter read today, and your leak starts tomorrow, we, our meter readers won't be out there for another twenty-nine, thirty days, because they read on a thirty, thirty-two day cycle. With this system, with the meter, it pings the meter several times during the day, so customer service, for instance, will get a, a report the next morning, or Water Department will, and they'll be able to be proactive and call the customer, hey, it looks like your usage jumped up. Is there a reason for that? Maybe they were filling a swimming pool or something that may have caused that, explain it, but otherwise, if they were having a leak, that we'd, we'd put them on notice of that.
So it's a hefty investment for the city. It's, it certainly is going to, there's a certain benefit to every citizen to have this system in place.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? And if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Just a bit of housekeeping, Council. There is an item that's been on the table for a while. I need to, but does that need to get added back to the agenda?
Actually, it needs to be added back to the agenda, and then y'all need to, I believe Mr. Menino is going to recommend you retable it.
Okay, thank you. So Chair will entertain a motion to take those tabled items off the table.
Shall I move?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Items are off the table. Mr. Menino, welcome back.
At this time, after meeting with the applicant today, we're recommending that this be tabled until March fourth.
Thank you. And any questions or discussion? I can tell you that we did, we had a meeting via Zoom with the developer, and one of the issues, and I'll tell you, the, the primary issue was the fact that this area is in a, it's in a tax allocation district that was originally labeled for retail, and there's benefits for that, and they would like to have that rezoned to multifamily, and the city, the county, and the school system didn't feel it was right to what would appear to be giving a tax incentive to somebody to develop apartments, because you're not doing it for everybody. And if you do it for one, you should have to do it for all, everybody should be treated equally. There is a way for, while you can't redraw the tax allocation district and eliminate it from there, you can work up an agreement that would essentially, should they choose to develop it that way, that they would not get the benefit of being in a tad. Basically, the money, the increment, instead of going to pay off the bonds, would be distributed to the city, the county, and the school system as if it were taxed at, at the regular rate. So it would, there's a way of doing it by maintaining a level playing field for everybody, not treating anybody any differently. And that will take a little bit of time. It'll take some negotiation on the part of the three governments, with the developer, and so that'll take a little bit of time, so if, and again, there's also the issue of council deciding that they want to annex and rezone, and then rezone for that purpose as well. So I don't want to circumvent, I don't want to take that as a given, but that's, that's the request for the more time. There was a movement in all this today, which is why it's, it's being asked to move down the road a little bit, so we can work on that and hopefully bring something that's agreeable and presentable to everybody. So, that being said, Chair, can I bundle those two motions, those two items as one, or do I need to?
They need to be separate, sir.
Okay, thank you. Chair will entertain a motion for AZ twenty dash zero four. Oh, actually, table, table item AZ twenty dash zero four.
Motion to table AZ dash.
You do need to specify the date as part of your.
Uh, to March fourth.
As of March, until March the fourth.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Chair will entertain a motion to, for Z twenty dash zero three, to have that tabled until March fourth.
Motion to table Z twenty dash oh three till March the fourth.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Let's go ahead and get the, let's, let's move on the direction of, let's go ahead and get the, the finance report knocked out there, Tom. Give us good news.
I always have good news.
Well, most of the time.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we'll be looking at October two thousand and twenty and comparing to October two thousand and nineteen. General Fund revenues decreased over last October by seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Expenses decreased by eighty-one thousand dollars. Areas of revenue I look at on a monthly basis, local option sales tax, have a slight decrease there of eleven thousand dollars, and building permits and inspection fees have an increase there of about fifteen thousand dollars. Water and sewer fund revenues decreased over last October by four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Expenses increased by a hundred and forty-eight, a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased capital expenses, decrease in debt service, and decreased transfers to the general fund. The gas fund revenues decreased over last October by five hundred and three thousand dollars. Expenses de, also decreased by five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. dollars, expenses also decreased by five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase gas, increased capital expenses, decreased debt service, and increased transfers to the General Fund. Excuse me. In the Electric Fund, revenues decreased over last year by seven hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, expenses decreased by thirty-one thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel, increased personnel costs, decreased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase electricity, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the General Fund. Stormwater Fund revenues decreased from last October by seventy-seven thousand dollars, expenses increased by forty-seven thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. Solid Waste Fund revenues decreased from last October by eighteen thousand dollars, expenses decreased by a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. Last Fiber Object Fund revenues increased from last October by twenty-two thousand dollars, expenses decreased by forty-two thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the General Fund.
Thank you.
Our cash, our cash position for the month of October, the unrestricted, the unrestricted cash decreased slightly, and restricted cash increased.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as Tom alluded to, the utility funds are doing very well for the first quarter of this year. As I alluded to in my memo spelled out there, the General Fund is slightly better than last year this time, once you take out the auditors adjustment that happened in two thousand and nineteen. We are making improvements, and you'll see a little more improvement, as Tom and I discussed earlier with, in November, when we get the property tax money, but so far, the General Fund, we've been trying to hold the expenses down, and the revenues, you know, as they've kind of trickled, trickled in, they're some, some line, but a little better than others, but so far, doing fairly well.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on the finance report?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. We have the use of tourism product development funds.
Let Tom Gillum start off this discussion.
Yes, this relates to our GeoBond projects with the remaining money that we had left over for the, this fiscal year. Talking with the CBB and Ellen Archer, they had some money left over in their tourism product development funds. The amount of that was fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and forty-nine cents. Based upon the projects that we had with the Matthew Hill Park improvements, which included the tennis court and basketball court resurfacing, the different amenities that were purchased out there, as well as the basketball goals and poles, and the tennis court benches, the HVAC unit for Aubrey Street Gym, and the electrical work that you guys just approved tonight. We have two projects remaining, one is engineered drawings for the new Parks Maintenance Building, which we have budgeted at twenty thousand dollars, and then that leaves the renovations to the Goodyear Clubhouse. With the remaining GeoBond money would be eighty-one thousand, eighteen dollars, so if we could add that TPD money to what we have in the GeoBond account, that would bring that total amount for the Goodyear Clubhouse renovation to a hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents.
I'll, Tom wasn't aware of the additional money. Basically, the number he had of fifty-nine thousand, this change was through October, the collections of the TPD money, through November, the collection is a little over, little under sixty-nine thousand. What I would recommend is basically the excess money that's available through December, because there will be about another five thousand collected, if the Council wishes to use this. And the reason for the, basically, what Keith has spelled out, is we have to, the Council has to allocate these funds for a particular project, and they can be Parks and Rec project. The Goodyear Clubhouse, we're not sure exactly what all the costs want to be, we want to do that project right, we're going to have to hire an architect to look at that, and also structurally, to what we can do with that. We do need to add the restrooms, the men's and ladies restroom, do the kitchen renovation, which is going to require meeting, getting it up to code. So, the bulk of this money between the Parks and Rec Bond money and this TPD money will go to the Goodyear Clubhouse. The next project in line would be the Recreation Maintenance Building, and if there's excess funds after those two projects, then we would like to allocate it to the Fit Court and related equipment. I really feel that the Goodyear Clubhouse will take the majority of it, and the Recreation Maintenance Facility will take some of that, but really, we don't know ideally, this time, exactly how much, but the recommendation is to allocate those TPD money for those projects, for what they had collected through two thousand and twenty.
Do we feel like, between the Bond money and this other pot of money, that we have enough to properly finish the Goodyear Clubhouse?
Yes, sir.
We're in the ballpark, yes, sir.
We'll feel, and part of that work will also be done if we have to, in-house with public works. We're going to try to keep those costs down, but want to make sure we do that project to serve that community.
And I mentioned this to Tom the other day, I know that the Cartersville Little League is doing an awful lot of work and improvements to their batting facility there, and have raised a bunch of money for that. I don't know that they've raised all the money, if, is there any chance that perhaps a portion of that we can do to help them, since they've raised money to, basically, on a city field?
The Mayor and Council, you guys can add to it whatever you'd like to prioritize, prioritize the list, that's fine with us.
Can you remind me what the Fit Court is?
That's just outdoor fitness equipment, mainly on, yeah, mainly on the Vita course in Dillon Park. Most of that is the old wooden exercise things, and most of them have rotted out, we've removed a lot of them, so there's, I think there's only like three remaining, so we were looking at, hopefully being able to replace those.
Okay. And if Council signed those recommendations, I'm filing them, too.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend that Little League, if there's, if there's some help-
Does that have to be designated by the end of the year, or?
It just has to be designated what you want to use that TPD pot of money for, so we can use it during our fiscal year, the rest of our fiscal year. Is that correct?
Yes. In other words, tonight, you need to make the decision how you want to designate it, and they can spend that money between now and, was it July first?
Yes.
Do we have to allocate specific dollar amounts for this?
No, you can save the remainder of the TPD fund, because money will keep coming into that fund until December thirty-first.
Okay. Do you can allot it after that date?
What we're-
No, it needs to be done, it has to be dedicated to be spent in the year it is collected, basically is how the state law works.
And just for information, the CBB gets that additional percentage, and the City Council a couple of years ago approved the initial amount for the building between the new Marriott Courtyard and the Conference Center, and they didn't have anything specifically allocated this year that they could expend it on, and for two thousand and twenty-one, if they, whatever they request, it has to come to the Council to approve the TPD money for the CBB, and then at the end of two thousand and twenty-one, we'll go through this process again, if they don't spend it, bring something back to the Council to use it for certain purposes that's allowed by law.
So, we could essentially just add Cartersville Little League improvements, or built, building improvements, and then just leave that vague, and then if there is money, or if Tom sees it, then it could be on the list.
Yes, and the money has to all be spent by July, whatever.
June thirty, technically, is what our budget year is.
I mean, if we have to, we could either give him a dollar, or we can give him a thousand dollars. Is that pretty much it? Just needs to be identified. Would you mind just adding that to the list?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's easy.
Mean bold or not?
Mm-hmm.
All right, does that take a motion, or is that just, you just need a nod to go ahead and do that paperwork? Keith, do we need to pass it?
No, it needs to be a motion.
Okay, let's just list it as a discussion, I'm sorry, I didn't know that. So, Council, I guess you need to make a motion to identify the use of these-
Of the TPD funds for the Little League facility, and whatever.
The other items on there, the Goodyear Clubhouse-
The Goodyear Clubhouse, the-
Rec Maintenance Building-
Rec Maintenance Building, the Fit Court, and Cartersville Little League.
Motion to approve.
But if we need more money in the Goodyear Clubhouse, that, do we have to list them in priority, or is that up to Tom?
That is up to Tom, unless you do list them in priority. I mean, you have the right to dedicate exactly how you want that money spent, if you want to say, I want the Goodyear Clubhouse fixed first, then if there's any money left over, I would like it to go to whatever, and then if there's any money left over, I'd like it to go to this choice. Y'all can make it a specific or unspecific as you want. You can give Tom the discretion, or you can specifically specify what projects and how you want it spent.
And I prefer to give Tom the discretion on that, since, again, that Goodyear Clubhouse is, it was a Bond project, we've got stuff allocated to that, and he's got, he's got his hands on it every day.
And that is priority for us, anyway, every Council, that's the, Goodyear Clubhouse is the priority number one for us to get that done, and then-
I guess more of my, what I was saying is, we might not have any more money after the Goodyear Clubhouse.
It possibly, yeah.
But if you're not, but if you're not on the list, then-
You're not on the list?
Right.
Okay. All right. Go here.
Motion to approve dedicating TDP funds to the Goodyear Clubhouse, the Recreation Maintenance Building, the Fit Court and related equipment, and Little League. Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have two items to add to the agenda tonight, Council, entertain a motion, add those two items.
No more.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Two items added. Mr. Lovell, why don't you tell us about this anti-light of notice?
Mayor, we received an anti-light of notice on behalf of a Maria Rodriguez Cortez from the Tovar Hastings Law Firm regarding an automobile accident that happened earlier this year. It is recommended that you deny it at this time, and then the matter will be turned over to the insurance company for resolution.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We are approving to deny, we're-
We're approving.
You're approving the resolution which denies the claim submitted by the anti-light of notice.
Make sure we did that right. Got a motion and a second, all in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Porta?
Yes, Mayor, as you, the Mayor and Council recall, when the budget came out earlier this year, you guys had a tough time making cuts due to COVID. At this point in time, our fiscal year, we've looked at the numbers, and I'd like to make the recommendation to the Mayor and Council to give our employees, full-time employees, a one-time six-hundred-dollar bonus, those hired in two thousand and twenty be prorated, but the reason for this is they've, they've worked hard every day, and have done a great job, even through this tough time. I know the Mayor and Council would, would like to do more for them, I would like to do more for them, but this would be very appreciated by our employees at this time, and I would recommend, make that recommendation to the Mayor and Council to have a six-hundred-dollar bonus then.
And Council, you know, when we passed the budget, we had to create a budget for this fiscal year back in April or in March, and, you know, we, we came through the provision not knowing exactly where we were going to be, and so this Council had the courage to pass a budget that didn't provide for any salary increases, any mill rate increase, any new positions with the city, and no salary adjustments. One, something we took delight in, but we felt that it was important to do that on the front end, and to keep us, if we got to this part of the year and things were still going where nobody knew where they were going to go, that we would maybe be forced to have to cut people in services, and we didn't want to do that. So, we took that move on the front end, and our employees have stuck with us, and have worked through these difficult conditions. I want to applaud this Council for making those tough decisions early, and fortunately, we're in a position now, not to perhaps, like Dan alluded to, not to do everything that we wish we could do, but we can certainly do something to show our appreciation in, in what Council feels that, that our employees are entitled to, they deserve this. Now, this is something that, I know in my twelve years, there hasn't been bonuses, and I don't think this is the course that we'll probably take in years in the future, but, you know, again, even with the CARES Act funding that was supposed to come our way, we kind of earmarked that for perhaps doing something mid-year, and that got reallocated by the Governor. But I do think it's important, is it's a priority for all of us, to not only attract quality people, but also to retain them, and to do our very best for them, because they do their best for us every day, and so I appreciate it to Dan and Tom for getting this together, and I would turn it over to you for consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other business that needs to come forth, Council, this evening? City offices will be closed on the twenty-fourth-
And twenty-fifth, yes.
And the twenty-fifth. If you have garbage service, do you know how that's going to go?
Twenty-fourth will be picked up on Monday, and the twenty-fifth will be picked up on two, I'm sorry, twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth will be picked up on Monday, and then the Monday will be picked up on Tuesday, correct?
Okay.
Matt, what about New Year's?
Don't worry about that, we'll get there.
We're going to have a special meeting just for you, just for the morning.
Let me know if you're going to be closed.
If your garbage is supposed to be out on the first, don't put it out then, just put it out the next business day, and leave it out there, and our guys will come by and get it. Feel comfortable, Sam, maybe we'll even push out, maybe we'll even push out a robocall